Okay, great. Everybody here ready? We'll go ahead and start. I would like to call the work session of the Prince William County School Board to order. This work session of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22nd, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during dependency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutory required or necessary to continued operations of Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. Tonight's work session is for the school board to be presented with the proposed CIP for fiscal year 2022, 2022, 2023, 21, 22. What are we doing?
It's 22 through 31.
Oh, 22 through 31. Wow, I haven't seen 31 like that. So, okay, that is correct. I thought that was a typo. For fiscal years 22, 2022 through 2031. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Dr. Steve Walz.
Thank you Chairman Latif and members of the school. Lead off for tonight's meeting. And first of all, I would like to thank everyone who has worked so hard to put all of this together. This will be my last CIP, so I just am going to take a very brief walk down memory lane. In the fall of every year, I meet with the big CIP planning team. And again, we do that before the winter holiday. We also, thanks to Maureen in the planning office, always have great food and candy and all kinds of things that I really look forward to every year, except, of course, we didn't have any of that this year, but we did have our virtual meeting. We always have current and past employees in those various offices that put together the plan. So, we've had a rich history of continuity and understanding why certain decisions were made during periods of time in the school division. And you may be saying, well, what difference does that make? Sometimes there were very different decisions made because of the time and history. And one of those happened to do with the model that has very few windows in high schools. And that came out of a concern around the riots that we had years and years ago. And that model continued for some time, as you well know. We have facilities people. John Winley is the director and leads also the Office of Planning, Technology, and of course, as Matt Guilfoyle, John Wallingford in Finance. And then finally, who you're going to hear from first, Al Shiroki. And all of those gentlemen work very, very hard to coordinate a massive operation of planning and adjusting to the changes in population, technology and communications. We certainly know how something like the pandemic can impact us on a dime, literally in a matter of weeks. You may recall last spring, we were debating what we needed in technology. And that moved the needle after COVID hit about 180 degrees in that department. We added the technology piece. The year that I came in 2005, there was no direct representation of technology with that in the title on the superintendent staff. And that was added. As technology has rolled out over the years, as you know, that's become something that's more popular, more widely used in instruction. And definitely, we know what it involves this year. So, we also realize that you have to plan for that, just like bricks and mortar. And so, that's why this is a part of the plan. Tonight, you'll be hearing about our plans moving forward. And again, a bit of good news is while there are quite a few slides, this shouldn't be a late night meeting. Second, you don't have to make any decisions tonight. You're receiving information, and we're going to be revisiting this as this is a part of our budget process and kicks off our budget process. So, we're not asking you to make any decisions. And in fact, there may be things that you have follow-up questions that you don't even have to ask all of those tonight. There'll be plenty of time. There's weeks and weeks that will go by. You are certainly invited to contact Mr. Shiroki, Mr. Wallingford, or Mr. Guilfoyle, and they can interact. One who's more specialized could address your question or just visit about any of the things that you're going to see tonight. As you know, so much of this starts with planning. And our great planning office takes a look at all those variants in numbers and populations. And year after year after year, our population has grown until this year. So, again, all of those dynamics have to be factored into the plan. I'm kind of excited for the fact that soon we'll be opening school number 24 and brand-new school number 25 since my arrival in Prince William in 2005. So, we have in that space and time, we'll have opened 25 brand-new schools, each one on time and within budget. And our schools have become the envy of around the Commonwealth. Our design changes, our addition of windows, special lighting, those things have all made our buildings quite attractive. Library media spaces have changed. We have excellent nursing suites that have standards that, to the best of my knowledge, no division in Virginia and few in America have. So, it's with great pride that I turn the presentation over to Mr. Shiroki and look with excitement to share with you what we have planned moving forward and a little bit of an update on where we are today. Mr. Shiroki.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Chairman Latif, members of the board. Dr. Walz, it is indeed my pleasure to introduce to you the proposed CIP for fiscal years 2022 through 2031. It's hard to believe that we're talking about 2031 in a 10-year plan. I readily remember Y2K. So, to C31, this is a monumental time in, I think, a lot of our lives. Tonight's presentation, Dr. Walz did a great job introducing it. There will be three folks that will be speaking primarily this evening. I will be the one that talks the most. But Mr. Wallingford, annually, he will provide an update on the fiscal side of the capital plan. This process is a very collaborative process between finance, support services, as well as technology and communications, be it that all of those things encompass a lot of responsibility, a lot of expenditures, and a lot of good plan and using good objective data. So, with all of that being said, I'll go next slide. So, for this evening's presentation, this presentation is very similar to the ones you've seen in years past when it comes to format. Going to start off with just reviewing the current CIP projects that are in progress to talk about the successes and the good things that have been happening based upon your previous approvals of our CIP. Going to give an overview of the CIP process, review the proposed CIP, and talk about some modifications, some updated enrollment projections, construction, renewals, and maintenance projects that are embedded within it. As well as, Mr. Guilfoyle will have a discussion with a technology improvement plan of where we've been this past year and where we aspire to head as a school division with your support. I'll then go over the details of the proposed CIP changes and then talk briefly about the next steps within this process, knowing that this is the kickoff, but the operational budget, which is the counter to this, is a big component. And Mr. Wallingford will be facilitating that process over the course of the next few weeks. Next slide. So, just to start, Dr. Walz did a great job again explaining this. But with the three associates that oversee the CIP, it is led by our Director of Facility Services, Mr. Winley, Mrs. Lisa Thorne, our Director of Financial Services, as well as Mrs. A.J. Phillips, our Director of Information Technology Services. And I would be remiss to very briefly thank the entire team that is listed on this slide for the tremendous effort that they put forward. The CIP process that we usually have is a series of meetings where we physically meet, we discuss, we regroup, we collaborate. All of that has obviously been done virtually, as everything that we've done today, up to this day, has occurred. So, I want to thank everybody in advance for all of the work that they've put forward into this. Next slide. So, looking at some of our works in progress, I'd like to kick off and just show you some examples. Woodbridge High School and Garfield High School both have auxiliary gym expansions that are nearing completion at both schools, as well as the opening this fall of Gainesville High School and Potomac Shores Middle School. Next slide. At Potomac Shores, when we talk about our design standards, Potomac Shores is one where you, as a board, kind of hit the reset when it comes to our instructional architectural design, where our design is more instructionally based and it parallels the collaboration, the open environment that is being promoted within instruction today. So, here at Potomac Shores, these are some examples of some of the interiors where you see large collaborative spaces, hallways are wider. At the same time, you see that this is the first auditorium that's being built for a middle school. You know, we have two schools that previously have had auditoriums, but they were former high schools. So, this is something that we aspire to continue as we expand our middle schools. Next slide. One of our current renovations at Penn Elementary, this is expected to be completed June of 2021. Just want to show you some samples of the interior finishes, be it the ceiling tiles, casework, carpeting, flooring surfaces in the multipurpose rooms, the lighting that you see, just again, refinishing our schools and bringing them to comparable equitable status as it relates to some of our newer schools. Next slide. One of our support services buildings here at the Independent Hill Complex, which is just behind Independent Hill, we have some barracks that are being renovated. And here you see some before photos where ultimately our Title I and Child Fine Programs will be located in these spaces. But the photo to the right just gives you an example of where this was in a structure that used to have a crawl space, and it's being reconstructed to where it has a concrete floor slab. Next slide. And so, here you see some of the after effect where you see those same spaces where they have the new finishes. And again, these will be able to be provided for support services within our school division, you know, for the next 20 to 30 years. Next slide. Unity Reed High School, new concession building. In addition, Woodbridge High School also has a concession building that is being constructed. This is part of our athletic enhancement program where when we go to schools and we look at their synthetic turf fields and track replacements, we also look at things such as concession buildings and bathrooms. And at Unity Reed and Woodbridge, it was determined that both of these schools were not at the same parity as many of our other high schools. So, we took this opportunity to increase the bathrooms. So, the picture to the left is the original building. The one in the middle is the new. And the photo on the right, that is actually a bathroom. The one thing I will note is with building code and requirements, bathrooms that were built in the '60s may have only had three to four bathrooms in them. The newest ones have 15 to 20. So, it does match ADA standards and capacity requirements. So, these will be fine additions for both schools. Next slide. The auxiliary gyms at Woodbridge and Garfield, which I mentioned earlier, here I just wanted to show you, you know, these, as we talk about fenestration, these adding of natural light into our buildings, that's a theme that is embedded throughout our CIP. Here, both of these schools, before these additions were added, pretty much had concrete, excuse me, brick walls facing the main road of the school. By adding these gyms, we have added windows that, one, change the image of the school, the face of the school, but also add substantial natural lighting into these athletic programming facilities. Next slide. Brentsville Greenhouse, this is an example of our commitment to the CTE plan that you also approved through the budget process, where there are projects that we can identify to support. Here at Brentsville, this was the addition of a greenhouse that supports the school's existing horticulture program. Next slide. Bevel Middle School renovation, another example of where you see an older school that we've been able to improve the interior finishes within the classroom, the cafeterias, the hallways, the gymnasiums. In addition, there was a need for an additional music suite to be added to the school. Next slide. So, as we look at the CIP projects in progress, there are some projects that are not mentioned tonight, but I would be remiss not to talk about them. First of all, last year, you improved the schematic design for the Rosemount Lewis Elementary School. That project is currently out for construction, and we anticipate it being awarded within the next few months, once it closes. In design, last year Hilton High School was on the table for the CIP. We have concluded with this design, and we're planning to put that out later this winter, early spring, as well as we have Gainesville Middle and Reagan Middle classroom additions. And then we have two fenestration projects that you approve that are in design at Osborne Park and Unity Reed, as well as a fairly substantial renovation at Parkside Middle School. Next slide. In our CIP process this year, we follow the same basic tenants each year. First, we review the enrollment data and projections. We review the available funding, and that's what Mr. Wallingford will be discussing, as well as we continue to focus on our portfolio of existing facilities and structures. You, as a board, have made it very clear that though we have renewals and we have capacity projects where we build new schools, that we need to be very conscientious to look at the other existing schools that are not ready for renewal, but they do need to have substantial infrastructure improvements included in them. So, again, that they are comparable with our other schools. As well as this year, we're incorporating your sustainability initiative, and I will elaborate a little further in the presentation about that. Next slide. So, the first piece that we looked at in our CIP team is obviously our student enrollment. And this is not going to be a surprise to you, but due to the pandemic, schools, not just of Prince William or in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but nationwide, have experienced fluctuations when it comes to the student enrollment. And as of September 30th, we were over 2,400 students less than what we had projected at the elementary level that had the greatest delta, primarily in the kindergarten classes. But middle school also contributed to that. Though our high schools did increase some, it was still not at the rate that we had projected. So, in years past, we've talked about projections, and Dr. Cartilage and his team do a phenomenal job looking at the science of demographics and projections. But at the same time, they look at trends and practices. In years past, we've always told you that when we have projections, anything that is five years or greater is speculative. We use the science, we do the best, but anything less than five years, we can be fairly precise with. In this year's case, we really don't know when the students are going to rebound. Will it be when the students will return to 100%? Will they all return? Will a portion return? Mr. Cartilage and his, Dr. Cartilage and his team have had to really look at where have these students gone? Have they gone to homeschooling? Have they gone to private schooling? Did they move out of the area to really gain an understanding of that? But what we would say this year is our projections for next year are going to be speculative at best. And we're going to work hand-in-hand with the finance team under Mr. Wallingford to make sure that we plan accordingly, but also that we're able to meet the needs of the school division. So, we would say here, our projections are assumptive as well. But again, we question when we're going to return to normal. But what Dr. Cartilage and his team has to do is they have to start looking at data that's ancillary, supporting data, to try to build an understanding of where we're headed so that we can be responsive in future years. Next slide. So, with this, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wallingford, who will take a few moments to go over a few slides talking about our debt capacity and how it relates to our finances.
Thank you, Mr. Shiroki, Dr. Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walz. Just a brief discussion, couple of slides about money. The first one you see here, you've seen in prior years, but we continue to show it. And that is our debt, our debt burden as a function of revenue. And we're showing this over the period fiscal 13 to fiscal 28. And there's some good news here, actually. Over the past three or four years, we have seen interest rates on the debt that we have sold at historical lows. There aren't many people alive who've seen, you know, 2.2%, 2.3% rates, and that's what we're seeing. Because of that, this curve that shows debt as a percentage of our total revenue has actually flattened out a bit. And you can see it's maybe not as low as it was in 2013, but you see from current year moving out that those rates are pretty good and you don't see them accelerating the way we did in 15, 16, 17, 18. So, that's good news. Next slide, please. Next slide here is just the increase in debt service. We currently run around $100 million a year in our total debt service. And what this slide shows you is the old debt coming off and the new debt coming on. Again, we're just running around 100, a little over $100 million a year. Next slide, please. This is simply a schedule of the debt sales that are planned going out through fiscal 29. We don't show fiscal 30 on this presentation because, one, like Mr. Shiroki mentioned, the further out you get, the less precise your forecast get. And the number for the V30A sale was only a couple of million dollars. So, we didn't even show it. But you can see, and ranging anywhere from $170 to as low as $50 million over the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. And one thing I'd like to add is that there is a tremendous partnership between Mr. Wallingford and myself, knowing that disposition was once combined and it has now been separated. But what this has allowed us to do is to right-size our CIP based upon the information from our facility services team, as well as our planning team. And it allows us to modify it year to year to where we're not backed in a corner and we're forced to continue with the CIP that we have each year. It does give us that fluidity that is necessary, especially as we're tracking data and we're monitoring those projections. So, I would be, again, remiss if I was not to mention sustainability and what part that has played in this year's process, but what part it will play in future years. Again, back on June 10th of this year, you issued the Sustainability Initiative outlining your strategy to improve Prince William County Schools' carbon footprint, to reduce its dependency on fossil fuels, and to ultimately change the educational culture surrounding sustainability. You know, your Sustainability Initiative is not just about carbon neutral and building energy-efficient buildings. It's about changing the environmental literacy knowledge of our students and our staff, the eco-knowledge, to where it's changing the way we do business in anything and everything that we do. And under the leadership of Mr. Brian Gorham with his energy team, I feel very confident with the leadership on the Sustainability Committee that we're going to be able to get to the charge that you have asked of us. You know, these broad-ranging set of goals, you know, we want them to enhance the performance of our energy-consuming systems while also increasing the awareness and the literacy of our students. As you're also aware, our partners over the general government with Prince William, they have also passed a similar resolution this past year on energy sustainability. And we plan to work collaboratively with them on these efforts to where we see synergies and power in being able to change the footprint of Prince William County. Our school division in the CIP, we're taking the first steps towards implementing. And what you're going to find is this year, you're going to see there are some sustainability projects that were going to be forthcoming. But in future years, our sustainability team will be making recommendations to the CIP committee back in, I'll say, as early as the summer of the school year. We're going to take that and see how we can incorporate what they're asking of us and what they believe is important, building that into our CIP. I will tell you, just like anything, there's always more wants than there is funding. And our job is going to be to try to vet that and to determine where we can get, I will say, the most bang for our buck in meeting your resolution that you have asked of us. So, we do look forward to that. And again, we've had two meetings with our Sustainability Committee thus far, one as recent as last evening, and they have both been very successful. And the members that you appointed have already kind of jumped in headfirst as far as wanting to participate and becoming involved in many of the committees and subcommittees. Next slide. So, as we move forward, some of the projects, and you've heard some of these before, of what are things that you're going to begin to see in the CIP? Well, we've always talked about LED lighting, and you're going to continue to see LED lighting because you get the greatest energy savings for the least amount of cost in the shortest period of time. It's an easy one. But it also enhances our students' instructional environment as far as increasing the amount of lumens that are within a room. We talk about rooms where we can't get natural light. Changing the bulbs just to LED, it gives an appearance of natural light compared to what, even what we see in this room here, where this is not as bright as it could be. And this is a room that could stand to be improved, just like many of our facilities. So, we want to capture that where we see that it fits best. Smart buildings, the term of building automation technology, you're going to begin seeing a lot of that where we put computer controls, even more so than what we have today into our schools so that we can monitor and right-size when it comes to heating, cooling, lighting, environmental factors, to where ultimately there will be energy savings that reduces our carbon footprint. Net zero schools, you know, we've talked about how Aquaquan's replacement would be one of the first ones that we're targeting to consider for that, given its site. You will see high-performing roofs, different type of roofing technologies that are able to get higher energy ratings, as well as geothermal technologies for our mechanical systems, for the heating and the cooling, taking advantage, if the site allows it, to take advantage of the borings and the ambient temperature that can be in place, as well as things such as wind turbines and solar arrays. You're going to see those being discussed. In addition to schools where possibly we cannot achieve net zero, the consideration for you to look at the possibility of purchasing energy credits to offset where we are having an impact on the carbon footprint. Next slide. So, in the theme of fenestration, you know, last year, we talked about the use of a technology called a solar tube, which is not a new technology. It's been out there for several years. But I have just a short video clip that's going here to kind of show you where we have schools where we cannot add natural lighting as part of our sustainability plan. If it's on a second floor or if it's a first-floor school and we can incorporate the use of solar tubes, this is a way in which you can get natural light into an interior classroom without using any energy. You're using optics and reflective materials to get natural light. The lighting itself is very similar to what you would see with a cool white LED light that you might see in a classroom. It looks very natural when you see it. But as we're looking at the fenestration projects at Unity Reed and Osborne Park and Woodbridge and Garfield, as well as we have two projects in the CIP, one at Grand Park Middle School to look at, doing some fenestration work, primarily at the front of the building and then elsewhere. We also have it at Fred Lynn Middle School that we are looking at. So, this is a technology that you're going to start to see as we begin incorporating these designs. Next slide. So, as Dr. Walz said again earlier, very pleased to say that the projects that you ultimately had to defer due to being able to at least keep some cash in reserve, not knowing what the pandemic was going to impact, that it was going to have fiscally on the division, that we do have in this FY22 CIP as funded, the Brentsville, the Bennett Elementary School renovation, the Brentsville High School Site Improvement Project, which includes the practice field turf, stadium field lights, and a restroom building, Hilton High School's Artificial Turf Project, Garfield High School's CTE Culinary Improvement, where we're going to be adding a culinary-enhanced program there, as well as tennis court lighting projects at Potomac High School and Unity Reed. Next slide. So, the adjustments that we have in this year's CIP, there are three that I want to bring to your attention. And the first is with new school construction, and as it relates to our current projections, as we see with the pandemic and even without the pandemic, we, you know, obviously, we right-size our CIP. We look at the right time to bring a new school online when there are capital and operation costs that are associated. But with that being said, and the unknown, we want to continue to monitor. But at this point, we need to pause just for one year with these schools because we have lost a year in many respects when it comes to the fiscal funding in respect to the enrollment. So, with our new capacity projects, we are recommending that we're going to move the 14th High School from '25 to '26, Potomac Shores Area Elementary, we're going to move that one year, the Aquaquan Woodbridge Elementary, the new school, we would move that one year. And then the Yorkshire Area Elementary, the current projections are showing that as of today, that project could be moved two years, not just one, but two. And again, next year, we will look at the numbers from Dr. Cartilage and his team. And if we need to reevaluate this and move these, either move them up or move them back, we will adjust accordingly as we do from year to year. In addition, we're adding a new category under our maintenance line, which is a specific facility-based improvement project for auditorium and theater improvements, specifically for sound and lighting only. We've encountered many schools where their systems have either outdated or they have become unserviceable to where it has created challenges for the schools to be able to provide comparable programs and events. So, we're working with our schools to determine how this money can be best fit so that schools that need sound replacements, lighting replacements for their stage, that we can do that and help this school out so that they can, again, have that quality programming. The third adjustment that we have is with respect to one of our renovations, and that is with Brentsville High School. Last year, Hilton High School, when we presented that to you, that was the first major high school renewal in many, many years for Prince William. And we found last year that there wasn't enough funding that was provided, given the scope of the work, as our designers got into the school and really saw the condition of the primary infrastructure as it relates to the school and really saw the condition of the primary infrastructure as it relates to the heating, the cooling, and the electrical and the plumbing. So in doing so, we made a commitment, after committing money to Hilton, to evaluate the future high school renewals within our CIP to ensure that they were funded appropriately and that we could do the right type of renovation at that school. So we could go in, we could get it done, and we can get out. So we found that we did have a funding shortfall there of about $3.5 million. And in order to find that funding, we needed to realign it. But what you're going to see in a future slide is that there are some things that we can do to this school and to some of our other schools that are within our CIP renewal presentation. There are some key projects that we can do at those schools before we actually do the renewal, knowing that it's the right time to get that done. But it will not have a negative impact on the renovation itself. Next slide. So with a facility renovation overview, you see that the first three projects here on this slide, we are just finishing up on Mountain View, Bevel, and Penn. And Bennett Elementary School will be the first, but this shows you the renewals that are within the five-year CIP. Next slide. When it comes to maintenance and repair, we heard you very loud and clear with the Facility Infrastructure Task Force, the efforts made by them. But in addition, when the resolution was signed after the boundary change that impacted Unity Reed High School, where you asked us to focus on our existing portfolio of schools, we have made a commitment to continue to do just that. And these are the categories that many of our maintenance projects fall under, where these are projects that are not part of a renewal, but these are independent projects that keep our schools operational and at the place that they need to be. Next slide. So this is a slide that just highlights not all of the projects, but many of the projects that are included within our maintenance component of the CIP. These are not large-scale, again, renovations, additions. These are specific maintenance projects. And they range from very large projects such as roof replacements. And you see Battlefield, Freedom, Forest Park, Osborne High School, some partial projects at Neapsco and Ripon. Electrical improvements, where we look at lighting upgrades, and you see a series of schools there, Graham Park, Enterprise, Caridale, and Potomac View, to name a few, as well as some stadium and park and lighting projects. And then you see that there's a piping replacement project that needs to begin at Osborne Park, even before that school is ultimately renewed in future years. As well as some fenestration projects, you know, the adding of natural lighting to schools. And you see those projects that we have already previously approved, but you see Fred Lynn and Graham Park. We know that that's a project that we can do by adding natural light to those schools even before a renewal begins. With respect to HVAC upgrades, you have had a very strong commitment to providing a robust HVAC replacement program to where, when our systems, they reach the point to where they do need to be replaced, you have continued to support and fund those. And as you know, this past year with the pandemic, our technicians throughout the summer physically inspected every school's air conditioning, heating units to ensure that they were operating as they were designed by ASRAE standards, Building Code, and CDC guidelines and recommendations. And in doing so, aside from us providing and ensuring that our schools are safe for its occupants, given these times, it did allow us to revalidate our priorities of where we see and could validate that they are at the point of needing to be replaced. So these projects are the ones that, following our replacement cycle, are needed. And here you will see Woodbridge High School as an example of projects we're replacing, the rooftop units, Brentsville High School, many of the classrooms have wall units that are in the classrooms, and we will begin replacing those as well as many others. And then finally asphalt. Asphalt is one of those where it doesn't have to be done often, but when it has to be done, it has to be done. And you will see here that not only are we talking about parking lots, but even tennis courts. You know, we, for our high schools that are part of the Virginia High School League, we have to have those up to date. We have to have them safe. And this allows us, again, to have that robust replacement program to where we can keep our tennis courts and our parking lots up to the standards that they need to be. Next slide. So again, I won't belabor fenestration, but knowing that it's a term, you guys kind of gave me a little hard time last year about it. I do want to show, because a lot of people, you say fenestration, and they question it. And I just want to show an example at Ripon Middle where we did something simple. They had windows on the side of a wing, and we replaced them with windows that had 2/3 more light coming in. One, it changes the look of that building. It makes it look more modern, more updated. But by adding 2/3 more light into that classroom, it changes the appearance of the room. And here, talking about it, you got to see it really to understand it. But I know that many of us obviously have gone into our schools, that you've walked through them, and you see what I'm talking about. But this is a big, this is a game changer. And it ties right into sustainability plan when it comes to energy efficiency with respect to natural lighting opportunities. Next slide. So a summary, again, this is a slide that you see historically, which just gives a breakdown between the monies that we have, between proffers, bond, cash, as well as the five-year and the 10-year. And what you will see is, over a five-year plan, our CIP as proposed is just over $896 million. And over a 10-year period, it currently stands just below $1.4 billion. And again, these numbers will fluctuate over time. And as we work with Mr. Wallingford and looking at our debt capacity and our ability to be able to bond projects, this will continue to be adjusted over time. So with that being said, I'm going to briefly turn it over to Mr. Gilfoyle, who will provide you with an update of the current status of technology within Prince William schools and where we're looking to head. So Mr. Gilfoyle.
Thank you, Mr. Shiroki. If I can have the next slide, please. So good evening, board members and Dr. Waltz. So a year ago, I know it's hard to believe it was only a year ago, feels like about a decade ago. But a year ago, about this time, I presented to you a four-year digital equity plan. And I know at the time, we had some discussion around that and the feasibility of it and what it could, what could we achieve within our capabilities. And then, of course, a year ago, we didn't really fully understand what was coming for us. And then about a month later, we had COVID. Since that time, through your investments as a school board, Dr. Waltz, as well as the County Board of Supervisors prioritizing investments to enable our students to do virtual learning, this year, I just want to recapture kind of what we've achieved together. And that is that we've made over a $53 million investment in our technology just in the last six months. That investment is tremendous, and it has been an absolute tremendous amount of work for the IT staff. And they have delivered remarkably. They literally work seven days a week since March. And Ms. Phillips is here, and I just want to say to her and to every single one of the IT staff that are in the building here and also those that are, maybe will hear this later, that I couldn't be prouder of their work. I mean, just amazing. And so through their efforts, we have distributed, we now have on hand a laptop for every single child in Prince William County K-12. That includes 77,000 brand-new laptops as well as another 20,000 to 30,000 more that are just within the last three years. We have on hand now over 8,000 staff laptops, and we'll begin distributing those to teachers very shortly. We've ordered, as you know, web cameras and headsets for every single one of our teachers. We've upgraded our entire network across the entire school division, going into every single school to 100 gig, when just a few years ago, we were at two. So we have, as you know, implemented Canvas, Mastery Connect. We now have student internet at home for any student that needs it. All they have to do is ask. If they don't have it, they just simply need to ask, and we can get it to them. Of course, everyone now knows and loves Zoom. That was something that we implemented this summer. And then, of course, we also have implemented the Wi-Fi parking lots. This has been a tremendous, not just IT staff, but our schools have done an incredible effort of the distribution and logistics of distributing these things, our devices, as well as getting these into the hands of our teachers. I want to thank Mr. Wallingford and his staff, who have been tremendous in helping us from a financial perspective and procuring all these, along with all of our partners in student learning and our other departments, who have really come together to work collaboratively to make all of this happen. So I presented to you last year, digital equity, what I'm now calling digital equity 1.0, as a four-year plan. And I want to say that we have achieved that. And so what I'm proposing tonight is, if I can go to the next slide, please, is digital equity 2.0. And so really, what I'm suggesting that we move from here is really sustaining those investments that you made this year, and not trying to go backwards, but maintaining that, maintaining those digital equity investments for every single one of our students and our teachers, maintaining the investments we've made in our network infrastructure, that 100 gig, as well as all of the information security elements that need to go with that. And then, what we're talking about in terms of the innovation piece of this, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute, is now that we've had a very intensive, let's call it a six-month pilot of digital learning for every single one of our students, we have learned a lot of lessons. We know it doesn't work for every child, but we do know that for some, it's been tremendous, and it gives a lot of flexibility long-term, that we can begin to look and explore what kinds of things do we want to go from here from a virtual learning perspective. And so as part of our TIP, from an innovation standpoint, what we're proposing is begin the, exploring the creation of full-time schooling around virtual schools. That would be something that potentially we could target for FY23 at the high school and then moving into the middle and elementary school. And I've begun, we've just begun discussion on this, and what could it look like? It could go a lot of different directions. And Mr. Mulgrew and I have had some initial discussions on that, along with Mr. Bixby. We've started some conversations with Mr. Bassett and the IT staff and the current virtual Prince William staff. So this is something that we're in the exploratory phase, but it's something that we believe gives us a lot of opportunity long-term. Not for every child, but certainly as another program offering that could be available to students. We also believe that using hybrid model at the site-based level can also be something that would be flexible so that within a school, you don't necessarily need a full-time program. But just to use an example, let's say Garfield High School wants to offer a particular class that could be a hybrid class or has a virtual component to it. We believe that that's a very feasible thing, and we're looking at actually implementing that as soon as this fall. And I'm already exploring that with Mr. Mulgrew as well. We're also looking at consolidating most of that IT purchasing as opposed to doing it site-based, as has been traditionally, for these big purchases. And the rationale behind that is pretty simple. We've now purchased all of those investments, that $53 million investment I mentioned, it was really a central purchase. And so it's going to be, we don't want to go backwards in terms of having a patchwork quilt. And so we really want to make sure that we maintain those investments from a central standpoint and that we do those refreshes in a thoughtful and strategic way moving forward. And then, of course, all of these opportunities from a hybrid learning perspective especially gives you the opportunity, and now that we're one-to-one as well, that there are some significant potential cost offsets. For example, you no longer need the computer lab like we had when I was in school, where you went to the computer lab and you played Oregon Trail. You no longer need that. Every child has their own device, and so you don't need that computer lab. So the computer lab can be freed up for another classroom space. It could be used for other innovation types of things at the school level. And I know Mr. Shiroki will appreciate that, and we've been talking about this, is that that's additional space now that could be recaptured, which could also in turn reduce the need on trailers. And then, of course, our centralized purchasing and other items, as I mentioned, we're looking to do anything we can to reduce inefficient purchasing. And these other opportunities could potentially defer brick-and-mortar building needs if we have things like that hybrid model or a virtual school that people could enroll in, and reducing that overcrowding as well through the hybrid potential. And so all these are opened up now to us as potential, and we need to continue to explore them further. So kind of next slide, please. I'm not going to go through this slide in detail, but I do want to point out a couple of things to you. The great opportunity we had this year also provides great challenge down the road because we did make $53 million in purchases all at once, which means that every single one of those devices will all age at the same rate. And so that's something that we are concerned about. And as if you look at that first line item, you'll see the next couple of years, we have sort of, I'll call it minimal refresh. But as you look at those out years, you see that that number grows significantly. And that's because simply we purchased all those laptops at the same time. And so those warranties will expire, and those devices will age out, and they'll get overused, and they'll need to be replaced. And so that's why you see those numbers. So something to keep in the back of your mind is that, is that growing balloon payment, if you will. We also have investments here, continuing the investments we've made in what we call closing the homework gap, which is that Wi-Fi is at home for students so that they can have that access. And then, as well as the investments we need to continue to make in our division-wide enterprise, our network, and our overall information system support. And then you'll see a final placeholder there, which is in FY22, exploring the concept of a full-time virtual high school. And then the staffing that would need to come with that, you'll see that in the FY23, if we did a middle school in FY24, and an elementary in '25 and '26. Those numbers are large because of the idea behind it being that you essentially need to hire full-time staff if you're going to have a full-time school. So that's really personnel costs that you see there. And again, these are, these are sort of placeholders as we begin to explore that. But I wanted you to see that in order to create a program, we'd have to invest in it. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Shiroki.
My excitement that Mr. Gilfoyle talks about with the possibilities of a virtual Prince William, from a capital design, construction perspective, it's limitless. The fact that we could defer the use of trailers within our schools based upon a percentage of students considering to do online, the fact that we could ultimately minimize classroom additions that need to be added, it could change the way that we renovate our schools to where we have to redesign them to where they're designed for kids who come to school in person, but there's also students that do the hybrid approach or even full-time virtual, but they still take advantage of the services that we have in our schools. So we're just very excited about it because I think that it opens up a lot of opportunities for further dialogue in future years as this funding will allow. So thank you, Mr. Gilfoyle. So the slide that you have before you, again, is a summary slide that just gives you the five-year summary as it relates to the number of schools that are included within the CIP, our current capacity for our school division based upon our facilities, the amount of renewals, new schools, and the funding levels. And you will see at the bottom, the $896 million number, which is parallel to the previous slide that showed you the five and the 10 years. Next slide. So this leads us to, where do we go from here? Today's January 13th, and we're having our introductory school board work session. On February 3rd, we will have the proposed CIP budget presented to you. And then on February 8th, there will be a public meeting, as well as a public hearing on February 17th. Then on February 23rd, the school board will have a CIP budget work session. Following, March 10th, will be the final school board CIP budget markup meeting. And then ultimately, on March 17th, the proposed CIP for capital and operating will be proposed to you for consideration for the CIP and budget approval, again, March 17th. So with that being said, that concludes our program for you this evening. I do want to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Maureen Hannan, who was our supervisor, for our CIP and land acquisition, for planning, organizing, and pulling us all together, given the virtual world. But the, there's so many hands within this process, and she does a phenomenal job. And I want to thank her for pulling this all together, as well as a lot of the information and stuff that you have before you. So thank you, Ms. Hannan. And that concludes my presentation this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Shiroki. Dr. Waltz, did you have anything to add there?
No, but I sincerely appreciate, again, everyone's hard work in putting together this year's proposal and look forward to continuing to discuss it through the budget process. Thank you.
Dr. Waltz, I want to add to your very nice intro to this evening's CIP effort that not only the 25 schools you've been part of building and overseeing, could you just remind the board and the community about your renovation program, which not only 25 schools have you built, but there's 75 other facilities that undergo a regular set of, I know you have a plan of a full renovation and then these other renovations. I mean, give us an idea over the few, the years you've been here, what you've overseen in that regard, not just the new buildings.
Sure. Well, one of the things that's been really interesting in my career has been the opportunity to work in four excellent school divisions in four different states. And one of the things that I learned when I arrived in Prince William is their renovation approach was second to none. I wish I could say I personally brought that here. I didn't, but I helped to expand it, and I helped to include some areas like, for example, protocols around nursing suites, and there have been many others, major library renovations and so forth that weren't a part of the original project. But let me give you a concrete example of what I'm referring to. In most school divisions across the country, depending upon financing, they will come in every so many years and they'll paint your classroom. And if your tile or your carpeting wears out, every so often, they may replace that. And it's a sort of a it's a sort of a specific thing that they look at, and again, with HVAC here, everything is comprehensive. So we're constantly monitoring things, and we have these renovations that are called the seven and the 14. So you get certain areas where carpet is automatically replaced every seven years. The same thing with painting in 14 years. And then approximately every 22, 23, 24 years, there's a significant renovation where what people don't see with the eye, and that is so many of our heating, air conditioning. I know during the pandemic, there were people in some of our older facilities that were concerned about the HVAC systems. Some of those systems might actually be newer than some of the newer schools, because they're constantly replaced. Again, back to my specific example of a classroom, instead of just coming in and painting, or maybe another year getting a tile replacement, when a major renovation is done, the classroom is literally gutted. It is stripped of flooring, the ceiling, lighting, everything. When it, and the students are relocated during the time of the renovation, when it is completed, and you walk into the room, you think you're in a brand-new school classroom, right up to and including the casing, the drawers, the cubbies for the kids, and so forth. Every single thing is brand-spanking new. And that is something that is very unique to Prince William County schools. Also, our renovation timeline is very unique, and I will just tell you that if you go in facilities in our neighboring school system, you'll see some schools that look great, and other schools that don't look very good. If you go into our facilities in Prince William, even some of our oldest schools, you will see schools that are cleaned and maintained to a level beyond anything I've seen in. And I've, not only have I worked in four districts in four states, but I've walked in hundreds and hundreds of other schools over my career in many states, and we can truly be proud of what we do here. Just to give you one example, there was an investment years and years ago in a flooring called Terrazzo, which is a, which is a poured flooring. And many of our older schools actually have the very best flooring in the hallways that money can buy. In fact, we've moved to Terrazzo tiles. It's now so expensive to put in that we don't do it to the scale that we used to. But in our older buildings, those floors are the best of any flooring we have that money can buy. So that's been very exciting. The other thing is, we quietly worked behind the scenes to address many, many equity issues over the years, and I will just end with one example of that. So I remember when I first came, and I was getting to know the school board members, and one of the board members said they were heading out to the school after they had their meeting with me, and I said, well, what are you going to be doing out there? It was a middle school. And they, and she said, well, I'm going to be taking pictures of the auditorium, because I understand there's broken seats and, you know, sharp things as a result sticking up, and there's a church that uses that, and that's offline. And I called back to the office, and I said, you know, cancel my, my next couple of appointments, because I've got a board member going to a school, and that's us, that's our job, not a board member's job. So I went out there, and she was there, and she had her camera, and I took one look, ended up having a safety audit, and we completely gutted that entire middle school auditorium, and redid the school floor to ceiling that year. And as much as we try, you really have to pay attention to the older facilities, and I think that as money was available over the years, they did the best that they could. We now have a much more systematic approach to keeping those old buildings looking good, and doing what needs to be done, and adding the additions and so forth. I will just give you one final example. Our orchestra program has grown so much that in some middle schools, you can barely move your arm with the bow because there's not enough room. There's so many students. We had a small orchestra program, which, which has grown into something that, again, is a leader in the state. And so it's, it's been very exciting to be a part of, you know, hundreds of thousands of improvements across the school division. I know I keep saying one more, but I'll give you an outside example. So, you know, I'm the kind of person, when I visit schools, I pay attention starting from the minute I turn in the drive. I look at the school, I look at the outside. Sometimes I walk the grounds. I've stood with principals and analyzed the look and feel of a property, the way trailers maybe are positioned and so forth. But one of the things that's eye-catching is, as you know, in this day and age, if you're a Walmart or some other business, your property looks good. Your grass is cut, maintained, it's green in the summer. And we did extensive, extensive irrigation of our properties, including the walk-up areas to our schools, and we continue to do that. So we have an entire network of irrigation that has been put in, hundreds of thousands of feet of it, across the school division. And so I have a strong belief that a school, a school and a school property and building should be as invitational, welcoming, as any business. And I realize we can't always do the fancy-schmancy stuff, but we can have buildings that are attractive and grounds that are as well. So it has just been a wonderful pleasure to see these changes improve over the course of the now almost 16 years.
Dr. Walts, Dr. Walts, I want to, I want to, you know, your modesty and humility are admirable, saying that, you know, you came to a system you inherited on their renovation. But, you know, implementing a program is 99% the success of a program. And so I think, I'd like you to comment one, one last thing. We had an external audit years ago, not too many years ago, on our facilities, and the comment about our facilities relative to other school facilities in the region and elsewhere. Do you remember that audit? Can you comment on that?
Well, I do, because I'm not sure exactly what part you're referring to, but what sticks out in my mind the most is that I invited that audit. And when the audit was completed, you have an exit opportunity with the external team that comes in. And one of the things that they said to us about the facilities is, we learned a lot of things from your school division that we're going to actually be able to put in our audit reports of other school divisions about how amazing the work that you do, and the way in which you do it, the timelines, the way the mechanics of things are checked. And that's what I remember the most. If there's, if there's another item, tell me what it is, and maybe it'll trigger my memory.
Well, I mean, I remember you talking glowingly of that audit was a good audit, and that our facilities were really, I felt like ranked well above others in the way we maintain them and continue to maintain them. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, you know, so is our construction, our design. We've won state and national awards on, when we opened Patriot on that design. We've had reconstructions of some of our oldest schools that have actually won state awards. If you look at a picture of what Locklomond Elementary used to look like, and you drive up to it now, it's almost breathtaking how beautiful it is, both the exterior and the interior. And, you know, during the time of the Great Recession, one of the things that was our trademark is, you know, when the facilities folks, when we sat down and really talked about school construction, most school districts start, just put a screeching halt to much and many to all of their construction. We actually accelerated our construction, and believe it or not, one year, we built three schools for the price of two. And we actually accelerated the program. And of course, that got a lot of attention. And I just remember, I never thought I would be a guest speaker at the, at a state facilities convention, but they invited me to do that, and it was just, it's always so great to brag about the great things going on in Prince William County public schools.
Well, thank you. Yeah, let me, let me just thank you, Dr. Walts, for that. And, you know, you've, you know, you've done a terrific job, and you've built that on the shoulders of these terrific folks here who presented this evening, Mr. Shiroki, Mr. Beavers, Mr. Gilfoyle, and the incredible IT team, and all of the work. We all here on the board want to thank you for that. And I think there's nothing short of absolutely remarkable in a legacy that I don't think anybody in this community or in this region will ever forget. Mr. Wallingford, you had something to add?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up briefly on the audit you referred to. In Dr. Walts' first couple of years here, we had a firm come through called American Appraisals. They came through to appraise our buildings for some accounting work we had to do. And the comment you referred to, that Dr. Walts was too modest to repeat, was that we have some of the best facilities, this is an international company, by the way, that we have some of the best facilities that they'd seen east of the Mississippi on the North American continent. It was very complimentary.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Jessie.
Hi. I just, as I sat here tonight, I realized that I'm not just a ranking member on the board, but I'm the oldest person in the school system tonight, I guess. And I have been here since the 70s. And I was in those buildings, I think that was before Dr. Walts' time, where a friend and I had this going comment, which I've said before, that the termites are in a circle, holding hands, and if they let go, the building was going to fall apart. And I don't know if David was here, but barracks three did, the floor kept caving in. And finally, Gene, he was, I can't recall his last name, he said, Lily, every morning I walk in, I have to move my desk closer, my chair closer to my desk. And we realized that the entire floor was caving in gradually. And of course, they've redone those buildings. But, you know, I also have these little expressions, and one of which is, toot your own horn or remain in a state of untutidness. So I know it's difficult for you to toot your own horn, Dr. Walts, but everybody talks about your legacy. But I am just so, because I was at Vaughn Elementary, where they said you don't have a cafeteria, and I said, you're kidding, right? They said, no, you don't. So the food was brought across the street. So I have dealt with facilities, and David Klein and his group, I think I had everything done at that school, David. And everything was done. A roof, I don't know, we had everything done. So I got to know the people at facilities, and some of them are still here. They are phenomenal people. David Klein did a phenomenal job. And tonight, I'm looking at this presentation, and David, we turned it over to good hands, because Al Shiroki, I think, is going to add some things. I just want to thank you for what you've done for the school system. Your legacy has to be what you've done for facilities. And feeling good in a building really makes a difference, and feeling safe in a building makes a difference. The schools, the brand-new schools that, and you know, you and I were here for the wonderful swimming pool situation. We went through that. And, you know, I supported that, that facility. But I just wanted to say to you that you and all the people in facilities, and they, I remember the last thing, I remember the most laughable thing, was we were renovating the front of the building, and it was like Saturday, and school was opening on Tuesday, and the driveway was dug in, and I said, how is this going to happen? So they said, look, you're going to have a road here, you're going to have a driveway, you're going to have a bus entrance. And then they said, now, it may be hot to the tires, because the tar is probably going to be sticking. And sure enough, those men were there, they stayed there 15 hours, 25 hours, 24 hours a day, having been here for the entire time, and both superintendents and watching what you've done, and what David has done, and what I'm feeling so good about Al. And I have some questions down the road, but you've done a phenomenal job. Thank you very much.
So with that, I think we should move to the discussion of the presentation this evening. If anyone has any questions, as Dr. Walts pointed out, this is the first time we're presenting this. The board members certainly have time, as you're looking at some of these materials for the first time, to address the questions after the meeting with staff, with Mr. Shiroki. Set up your meetings appropriately, Mr. Wallingford, Mr. Shiroki, Dr. Walts. You have the timeline on the capital improvements, but certainly if there's some sort of broad questions tonight that will help you understand what we've presented this evening, please, I'll open the floor to that, if I see anybody's...
I'm staying on right now. I just have a couple of questions and a couple of comments, if it's possible. I know that we'll meet. The one I want to comment on, the Woodbridge Stadium, and it's phenomenal. The fenestration in Woodbridge High School, it says lobby, so it's going to be in that lobby area. Is that, am I correct? Al?
Which slide are you looking at, Ms. Jessie?
I, I'm not sure about the slide. There's one on fenestration, and it, I know the fenestration slide, but for fenestration for Woodbridge, it says the fenestration is going to be in that lobby area. You know, I remember when we put it on, that it was, it was a different type of thing. I can get, I can ask you more detail on that later.
Yeah, Ms. Jessie, that specific project, I appreciate the clarification. That's where we're looking at improvements to the storefront at the, at the front of the school.
And you're right. When I drive by and look at those, you guys have to drive by and look at those auxiliary gyms. It changes everything, the lighting and everything. It looks great. Aquaquan replacement, though, you said, you were talking about how we're going to, towards the future, look at the roof structure, and in terms of, what does that mean? That we're going to be looking at our facilities and looking at a different roof structure? I think it's on slide 23. I'm not sure.
Yes. With the Sustainability Initiative, one of the items in the resolution is that when we have large-scale roof replacements, or new construction where there are new roofs, that we're going to be looking at the applicability of including solar arrays within those sites. There will be some sites where it may be conducive based upon the positioning and the design of the school, but there will be other sites where it may not be. So when we look at Aquaquan's replacement, knowing that that is a school that we're targeting to be the first net-zero school for the, for the school division, that will be in our design, we're going to try to design a roof structure at that school that will be optimal for solar arrays. Because in order to achieve net zero, solar arrays is one of the key ingredients that you must possess.
And the other thing, on slide 23, explain, I didn't quite understand what you, why you're moving everything one year for the 14th High School, Potomac Shores, Aquaquan, and Yorkshire. What was the direction now for that?
Yeah. So to be more specific, as, as our planning department looked at the current enrollment and projections, and the projections, they're using the, the science, the tools that they've used in years past, but also kind of on the side, looking at our current enrollment. Again, when we right-size the, the construction and the starting of schools, we believe that these schools here, that we can adjust them by one year and still be able to open them to where they will meet the needs of the schools within that area that have capacity adjustments that are necessary.
Okay. And then the other question I have is the Woodbridge area. Weren't we talking about building a school off that Route 1 corridor? Is that, did I miss that? Was that?
That, so there's, the name has changed over the years, but when you see on the CIP, the Aquaquan/Woodbridge Elementary, that is the school area that we've identified that based upon projections that we will need to build. So that school that you're, you're asking about, that, that is the same school?
And then finally, on land acquisition. I know that David was on this committee with me, where we work with the Board Supervised, the DOC, talking about the need for land acquisition. Are we still at the same state where we were, where we're really fighting to find land to build schools? And that new 14th High School, that's going to be moved to another date too, right? To 25, to 26, right?
That is, that is correct. And, and you are correct in stating that when we get into areas that are very either densely developed, where there is limited acreage, it does become more and more challenging. And that's where with the CIP committee that you were a part of, as well as other board members, you know, we've looked at what are ways in which we can step outside the box, and if there are redevelopment opportunities within those communities, to even look at that, knowing that having green space in very densely developed areas is very limited. And at the same time, moving to a, from a one-story, two-story to a more vertical-type design structure, where you have less of an impact or a footprint that you're building a school on. So building up as you get into some of our densely populated, densely developed areas is one strategy that, that we've been focusing on. And you see that as an example... And you see that, as an example, with the design for Rose Mount Lewis. The land that we are using there, it's a smaller tract of land, it's within a very densely built area. And given the elevation of the site, a three-story school design is very appropriate. And we would anticipate that for the Aquaquan/Woodbridge Elementary Schools, and in addition to the Potomac Shore Elementary, which is also on here, that those will more than likely be a three-story design.
I know David and I, thinking of this whole thing, wouldn't look at a vertical, really more vertical school. So it's interesting that he's here or not, because it's like he is deja vu on that. I just also wanted to thank the technology people, because I had never thought about the impact of virtual schools and those sci, I mean, not the computer labs, that we may not need those anymore. I know that there are several schools that don't have science labs. Have you, Mr. Guilford, have you guys thought, or maybe, I'm not one of you, have you thought about some of the schools that don't have science labs, looking at, making sure that all of our schools have science labs?
Yes, so I'll respond to that, Ms. Jessie. So in a normal year, and this is anything but that, as you know, one of the things that I ask at the elementary level, we, and, you know, I won't go into a whole lot of detail, but we have an assessment of certain things, like, does an art teacher have a dedicated classroom? Is there a dedicated space for strings, for core, for music, general music, a science lab? And we have all that information, and sometimes it varies depending upon any special programs or enrollment. But certainly, that will be a consideration and an expectation, that if we can give up one room, and there's not a science lab, for example, or they have art on a cart, which I.
I know, I've got that, music on, correct?
So the answer to that question is yes. And one other thing that I wanted to add in, a few years back, and again, I know everything is different with COVID, but Mr. Shiroki, we afforded every board member an opportunity to meet, which we can still do, and through this same Zoom process, to meet with you or members of your staff, depending upon what their questions are, or maybe even the planning office, if it has something to do with enrollment fluctuations. Are we affording that opportunity to each board member again this year?
Yes, we have done just that, and we will continue to have a second round after the tonight's meeting for any further clarification or questions that we can answer. Thank you.
Great, because I think that, that was something that when we started that around, I think, six years ago or so, it was very, very helpful to both the board and also, you know, you, there's a lot of, there's a lot to this. It's a big district.
Well, I'm allowed you to ask stupid questions. David always said, yes, yes. And he was very kind to me. But thank you, guys. I'm done. Thank you very much.
Okay, next hand that I saw was Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, of course, shameless plug, I'd like to see that CIP Committee come back, now that we have new boards, and I'll just leave it at that. And secondly, I cannot, I don't think we can give enough praise as a board to all of the work that was done for our IT professionals. It's just miraculous. I mean, I've been on this board for seven years, and I think AJ probably best could attest to me every year going, like, how come we can't do this? Let's do this really cool, like, technology thing. I think I drove AJ nuts, and she's always so nice to me. But I just cannot give enough praise. I don't have the vocabulary to really encompass the miraculous work that your whole department did. I mean, I definitely was, this will be the first year, I don't, we don't have to use the whole, like, tube to explain bandwidth. Like, this is how often we discussed it. I mean, you know, I was looking forward to it. No, I'm just, it's just really amazing. I know that there are still kinks, and I think the average person out there doesn't, can't quite grasp the amount of work and time spent, and how successfully it was done, because, you know, people's computers still freeze, and everyone's not an IT expert. But I really cannot thank you enough for all of the hard work and dedication the entire team has done, and the homework involved, and making sure things were coordinated, and, you know, teaching teachers and instructing everyone. And then just down, even at the school level, the amount of internet cafes I saw pop up at schools to teach the average parent or guardian, because sometimes it's not even a, it's like grandma, who doesn't even speak English, who has to learn how, just from scratch, to start to turn on a computer to make this year so successful. It's just miraculous, and I really appreciate everything that you have done to make this year successful. We couldn't be where we are now if it wasn't for all of the hard work that your department did, not to negate anybody else's hard work, but it definitely is key and essential. So moving on from that, I just, I'm, this is probably the most excited I've ever been about a CIP. I feel like the spirit of Gil Chenham's budget excitement has taken over. I'm so enthused by hearing about virtual school and the possibility that we could do that. I don't know what to do with myself right now, because I think this year has really shown that, you know, the one-size-fits-all education really doesn't fit all, and students have really blossomed. And the fact that our division is so progressive and forward-thinking, to make this an option in the future, that's something we actually are considering for our students, is just beyond outstanding. I've always been an advocate for things like this, so I'm just, I have no, I'm just so excited, I don't know what to do with myself. One of the things that I do have a question about, which does not have to be answered now, is if you could maybe explain either to me or to the general public, because I know most people assume, like, when you think of computer labs, one of the main reasons we had them is because of SOL testing. So I'm sure a lot of people heard that and was like, oh my God, how are the students gonna take their SOLs? Because even if we have roaming laptops on computer carts, and they bring them in, that's where they went, that has been the norm. So as we move through it in this process, things that we generally value as norms, and how they change, if we could just get a little bit more explanation on that, when we talk about these things, I think that would be helpful for our general public who's listening. And I'm excited to, well, Mr. Shiroki, I've been excited since you've been here, because all of your ideas are, like, outstanding, as far as I'm concerned. But the fact that we would consider using these spaces for alternate learning environments, I think is fantastic, and anything that eliminates trailers and brings us forward and better servicing our students is fantastic. So that's pretty much the gist of my comments, and I'll finish up by saying, Dr. Waltz, I just want to say that I appreciate your leadership on this, because you are the head of our school division, and it's your coordination and leadership that has gotten us to where we are. And if it hadn't been for your progressive thinking, again, we would not have been able to undertake some of these things so aggressively, because you are the person that has to say go and sign off on it ultimately. And I'm just very impressed by what has, we have been accomplished this year. I did forget one thing. And Mr. Beavers, your department, I just want to give you kudos, because we actually have an audit report that says how outstanding your projections are. So I don't want to forget that, since we, everybody else got an audit report. I remember that report, because I was there during the committee. So if anybody's interested, we've also been certified in our ability to project numbers within five years, and our accuracy is in the methodology used, so you also get your kudos too, Mr. Beavers. But thank you. So I don't need to know the answer now, but whenever, maybe in our next work session or something like that. So thank you.
Dr. Waltz, if I can, I'd like to just go ahead and answer that real quick. Essentially, with the ability, now that we are one-to-one, students will use the laptop that's assigned to them for testing. And they won't have to go to the gym and be with, you know, the entire school to do their testing, they can do it right in their classroom. And so we'll be working those details out. You know, that may not be necessarily feasible in every classroom this year, given everything, but it is something long-term, where the student will use the laptop that they've been assigned.
Thank you, Mr. Guilford. I can imagine the impact that'll have on a lot of our EIP, IEP students, and students who have testing anxiety and things like that. I think that's fantastic.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'm gonna try to talk monotone, because my wife tells me when I'm passionate, I sound angry, so. Couple things first. Dr. Waltz, I know we haven't agreed in a lot in the last eight months, but I have to give you a lot of credit for the previous four years and your entire staff on doing some great work in the Potomac District. We've already talked about the state-of-the-art enhanced design for what will be the largest middle school opening up this fall in the Potomac Shores community, serving students off Route 1, serving students in Potomac Shores, and students in Montclair. So thank you for that. I want to also thank you for the greenhouse we quickly implemented at Potomac Middle School, the turf field, the outdoor enhancements at Forest Park, the additional funding for the IT program at Forest Park, renovations at Montclair, Henderson, Patty, which allowed us to open the Washington Reed facility, and allowing me to help accelerate the gym, auxiliary gym at Mary Williams. So thank you for that, and your entire team for that process. AJ, I want to give you major credits, the entire technology team, Mr. Guilfoyle, being in the ed tech industry, implementing a learning management system, a student information system, turning over a complete different website, different resources and tools on a single sign-on, is miraculous. Most school districts will only tackle one sometimes a year, and the fact that we were able to turn it over, and it's unbelievable, just how quickly that was able to accelerate. And so for someone who literally works with school districts and tries to encourage them to buy things quicker, it's not as easy as what happened, literally occurred. So monumental task, thank you so much for that, that is amazing. And the virtual school, and I've been reading a lot of articles about the post-COVID, the world, and there's gonna be an increase for digital learning, and I think it'll provide a lot of benefits, as Ms. Williams said, that, you know, there's no, you know, one-size-fits-all. It'll also, you know, I talked to Mr. Mulgrew about the need potentially to not have to have staff at multiple buildings. If the kids are taking courses where there's only one AP, I don't know, like just an AP bio teacher, you can have them join virtually. So it'll definitely save us in key areas that will provide an open more funding for students. And I also think having a more robust programs will keep kids more with Prince William County Schools and the public school system, as opposed to looking outside. Want to ask a couple of questions real quick, and we don't have to have answers right away, but, you know, I do support the Infrastructure Task Force. My former appointee, Chris Dixon, is out there, who's an outstanding orchestra teacher in this county. So he helped prepare me with a couple of questions for this meeting tonight. One question is, this task force identified instructional space deficiencies between older and newer schools. Newer elementary schools have activity rooms, science labs, strings rooms, and story rooms. Older schools do not have some of, or all of these instructional spaces. Current practice is to add activity rooms and science labs to older schools when they undergo addition or renewal projects. When will string rooms and story rooms begin to be added to schools undergoing major construction projects?
So I'll take the question. That is something that we still need more consideration over. So when I arrived, the current practice was in buildings, new buildings, they would take the stage in the multipurpose room slash cafeteria in an elementary school, for example, and they had these large folding doors. So many of these schools still have that. And of, you know, again, I try to be very positive, but I will say, that was the most bizarre thing I think I had seen, other than the windows. But again, econo, or the lack of windows. Economics played a huge role in that, and the strings program was much, much smaller. So as that has dramatically grown over the last 15 years, we changed the model to have a dedicated strings room. And we've tried to make improvements while we're, you know, again, trying to get the science labs at every building and all of those things. So the focus just these last few years has been, the most pressing need was at the middle school level. So that's where we directed our renovations to string spaces in several projects in our middle schools. And we have that on the list, so I would, I know who you're talking about, so you can tell him that we're, we will continue to explore the possibility of making sure that we have a dedicated space that is an appropriate space. Because, again, quite frankly, as the schools have grown in population, if you're still on the stage with that partition pulled, and there's PE going on, or it's, you know, lunchtime, and you're trying to have strings, it's problematic, to say the least. So please tell him that is, that is on the list.
He's out here, underneath his mask, I think he's smiling or laughing, so.
Okay, good.
Or I don't know. A couple, two more. So Grand Park Middle School has been kind of my project the last two years. If anyone will infamously remember, I tried bumping it up like six years last year in the CIP, which my board voted down seven to one. With that being said, so I know Grand Park is receiving solar tubes. Also, Grand Park is up there for fenestration. Do we have an idea, Mr. Shiroki, when that will occur for Grand Park? I know we had a one-on-one, you talked to me about some of the improvements with the HVAC and the air conditioning at Grand Park that we're trying to do. There were issues starting this school, this past, a year ago, hard to believe, where the air conditioning would go out frequently. I remember back to school night, it was very hot. So I'm just curious, I know Grand Park's further down the list in renovations, but in the meantime, do we have a better idea? And if we don't have that right now, I don't need to put you on the spot, it's.
Yeah, no, actually, we can, we can provide that.
Unless you have that off the top of your head, I think it's fine to get back to him. We want to make sure we're given accurate information. And the fenestration is a big project.
Yeah, absolutely. We can tell you the fenestration, the design would be into the proposed year of the CIP. So that's a project we would start on the front end. The air conditioning is also highly prioritized, and it's in FY '23. So it would be in the second year of the CIP, the design phase would start.
Okay, last one. In the current approved CIP, Forest Park kind of seems like it was skipped over in the renovation prioritization list, and is not listed in the facility renovation overview in tonight's presentation. Do we have an idea when Forest Park, I think we're at a point close to when the renewal stage would happen? And again, just, you don't need to answer right now. These are just questions I have down the road.
So again, I can answer that, because that's a question. We talk about Forest Park in our CIP meetings. We do not show in the CIP any projects that are outside the five years, but Forest Park is the next high school that is in the sequence, once we complete Brentsville. Forest Park is next.
Okay, and just for clarity, so Grand Park, this summer going into next year, will not have the air condition, that that's not being worked on this upcoming summer?
Not for this summer, no.
Okay.
Our focus has to be with, the two projects that are at hand are Brentsville High School's air and Coles Elementary. Those are the two that we have to get accomplished.
I can't try to get the board to vote me down one to seven and move them closer. I could try. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone collectively tonight, appreciate it.
Okay, so I don't see any other hands. I have a couple of quick questions. Mr. Guilfoyle, so, you know, one of the concerns last year in the discussion of the digital equity effort prior to the pandemic, was the concern of rising costs over time and being sort of held captive once we go down this road, that forever, this is gonna be this increasing budgetary expense that continues to rise. So, you know, just, and I know we spent a lot at one time, we're looking at 22 million in year one, 21 million, 41, 4150. Do you have any idea how that flattens out, or does it continue as a curve? What are your thoughts?
So I think if you look at the, at the out years, essentially, you're gonna have a little bit of an ebb and flow, but generally speaking, you're looking at that three or four, three or four year where it's in the.
Forty-one, fifty million range is sort of.
No, not that whole, not the bottom number. If you look just at the top number, that student device refresh is what you're talking about, specifically, that's the student laptops.
Right.
So if you look at that, that, when you get out to about 25, 26, where you're in that 12 to 16 million dollar range, that is something that would, you start to see that as being kind of the ongoing cost.
Somewhere in that 15, 16 range, somewhere around that. Okay, okay. And then, and then everything else on that chart seems fairly flat.
Correct. Most of those things are things that are ongoing costs, if you will, things like just maintaining our network, and again.
Which have always been part of our budgets.
Generally speaking, we did up those costs this year, if you remember, because we, you know, just like at home, if you have a 50, if you have a 50 meg, 50 gig, I'm sorry, internet subscription, and you would decide, oh, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna up my internet subscription, you have to pay more per month. We have the same thing here. So when we went from 10 to 100 gigs, we now have to pay Cox a lot more money per month, and so that's essentially reflected here.
Right. And I know you may or may not have done this modeling, Mr. Shiroki, but you did mention it as part of Mr. Guilfoyle's discussion. that, you know, when we look at what we've spent on technology, that kind of spending is going to free up space, rooms, less trailers. Does it free up monies that would have gone to? So, in a sense, are we spending less on facilities because of this or we're spending differently on facilities because of this? Or it might be a little bit of both?
Actually, it'd be a little bit of both. Obviously, if you're able to defer having to spend monies for additions or for trailers, you may free up cash if cash was being used, or you may sell less debt. And that in turn may free up, and I'll let Mr. Wallingford weigh in on that, but it may free up additional monies. At the same time, if you look at changing this shift of instruction, I think that there would be an investment that you would come to us and say that we need to modify our existing buildings. You may need to have some interior renovations, not of the renovation that we talk about where we replace the heating, cooling, the electrical, but doing an interior finish renovation where you change the way, because you may have rooms where kids just come and plug in. You may have rooms where they come and do, you may need more labs because they're doing online instruction, but they may need to come in for lab work. So, you may be expanding labs or some of your CTE programs because those electives may grow as a result of the freed space in the student course load. So, it's unlimited in the possibilities. But as we begin to define it as a division, I think that it's worthy of keeping that in mind. But you wouldn't want to make decisions until you find that what is the model that's working, that's tried and true, before you start deferring capital investment. But in the long term, absolutely. Just as our commercial spaces that are private industry and businesses use, you know, they have reduced their footprints immensely by having telework type of situations within their own industries.
Thank you. Let me just wrap up with one question. And I saw Ms. Argapor had her hand up. The, Mr. Wallingford, I think it's just important to reemphasize, and maybe you can talk to this, the incredible success Dr. Waltz and you all have and your team of working the markets and saving on debt servicing and looking at the rates. Lot of that savings frees up monies to do some of the other projects we're talking about. And as you look forward, do you forecast continued savings along those lines? Meaning, you all have done a great job of taking the dollars we make and making them work harder for us.
Dr. Latif, first, I'd like to address the question you put to Al. And that is, those dollars that are freed up, it will require some fiscal discipline and some planning discipline on our part to take advantage of that money because it could be easily spent on additional projects or go elsewhere. It's something that we've talked about. It's something we will focus on and try and take advantage of in the future. The question you just put to me, first thing I'd like to do in response to that is thank the folks over at the county, number one. They do a great deal of work, and they put a great deal of effort into making sure we get low rates. And we have been extraordinarily successful over the past couple of years. The second group of folks I'd like to thank are Lisa Thorne and Kathleen Addison. Kathleen may be on this call. Lisa Thorne, as everyone knows, is still at home recovering. Those folks also put in a tremendous amount of time making sure that we account for things correctly, have our compliance work in place, and working with the county to make sure that we're getting the best rates we can. We've shifted the timing of our debt sales. We've mixed up how we do the work with the help of the folks from the county in order to make sure we're getting the lowest rates. The rate that we got on the most recent sale is the lowest rate I think anybody, in my experience of almost 30 years, has seen. It's been extraordinarily successful. Rates that we were seeing five, six, seven years ago, instead of debt service being $100 million, it could be $125 million. It's huge, huge impacts. And so, to Mr. Klein, who I see on the call, his efforts as well. We've had just a fantastic team led by Dr. Waltz. And in addition, Mr. Beavers and Mr. Ross over in facilities who will work on the finance side to make sure things work as well financially as they can. It's been a great team effort.
One last quick thing because this is important. And many might say, well, you know, it's not you guys that got the good rates. It's just the economy. But I would like to remind everyone that it is your all's, Dr. Waltz, Mr. Klein, Mr. Wallingford's, discipline financially over the years that continue to allow our county to have its AAA bond rating. And it's that AAA bond rating, if I'm correct, that allows us to get some of the best rates possible. And so, that's an active effort to keep our discipline in check. Is that correct?
Absolutely, Dr. Latif.
Yeah, because when I go to John Wallingford, I ask him, how come we can't borrow anymore? I mean, the rates are so low. And you continue to tell me that we have this 10% cap. And maybe in two sentences, you can tell us why that 10% cap is important?
So, the 10% cap, the revenue cap you refer to is an item in the principles of sound financial management that the county uses as their guidelines in managing finance and in this case, debt. And we tell, when we meet with the rating agencies, on occasion, we'll go to New York. And every time we sell debt, we have a conversation with them at a minimum online. Sometimes they come and visit the county. We share with them as one of the guiding principles that we don't exceed 10% of total revenue or debt service doesn't exceed 10% total revenue. And you can see in the slide that I showed earlier, we're running around eight, right now around 8%. I expect it'll climb a bit. But we're still a percent, between a percent and 2% below that cap. We really need to try and stay under that cap if we can to maintain that AAA, triple AAA, all three of the rating agencies rate us as a AAA. And that really, really saves us money when we go to the markets. Prince William County and schools have an outstanding reputation in the markets with regard to our financial management and the stability that we've had in place over the years with people coming onboard and staying for, like Dr. Waltz, 16 years, Mr. Klein over 30 years. I've been here now 28 years. That stability is extraordinarily important in their ratings as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Ms. Argapor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank you guys for getting Bennett and Hilton back into the projects. I know those communities appreciate it very much. And renovations are going to be going on with Hilton. I've gotten to take a look at some of the plans and hear what they were up to. And it's very exciting for that building. The question I really just, and you can answer it here or we can talk about this later, is in information security. As you know, that every email, every laptop, every device is now a portal for someone to do something. So, security is a big deal in every industry, hospitals, school districts, governments. And I noticed on the 2.0, Digital Equity 2.0, we have information security and information system support. And the security doesn't have something in every column, but the support does. I wondered if you could talk a little bit about how we are keeping our student information safe and our employee information safe. As you know, there's been breaches recently. And I just want to know a little more about that.
I would prefer to have that be done offline because we don't really want to, part of our security procedures is not to reveal to the general public what those are. So, we can certainly handle that question.
Perfect.
For Guilfoyle, offline, since this is going to be publicly televised.
So, then I'll just say, thank you for everything that you all do, rolling all this out and keeping all of our student and employee information safe.
Thank you, Ms. Argapor. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody, Mr. Chiroki, Mr. Guilfoyle, for this presentation. I'm really excited about what we were able to do with digital equity. I was one who really liked that idea from the very beginning last year as a brand-new board member because I felt, you know, it really helped, it helped close our opportunity gaps. It helped increase access to specialized classes. It provided flexibility in scheduling. And it also gives us access to digital content and online programs, materials, textbooks, you name it. It just opens the classroom. I think it's just really awesome that we've been able to do it. And I think it will be a game changer in our division. I'm sure it will take us a little bit of time to gather that data because the pandemic sort of like tipped us all off the apple cart a little bit. But the effect of that plus Canvas itself, the online learning management system, I'm just really excited about that, the effect that that's going to have moving forward and the connection between the IT efforts that we've been able to make and our facilities themselves, you know, balancing our class sizes, balancing our school sizes. You know, the opportunity to take a few classes if a school's getting a little overcrowded, you'd open it up, let students take a few of those classes online. You know, just coming from Battlefield, for instance, being a really overcrowded school up to this point, I can see how this is just going to give us a lot more tools in our toolbox to increase the quality of our education. So, I'm really excited about that, Dr. Waltz, and all, you know, the whole team. I, for Digital Equity 2.0, let's see. Do you, are there particular divisions? I know there are divisions who are further ahead of us on this. And so, I was, my question, I have a couple of questions. This is my first question. Are there other divisions that we are looking to as a model? And I assume we are looking around to see the different models of different divisions that have, are further down the road from us with our idea of like a virtual high school or like a virtual, you know, virtual elementary, middle, and high school, or what exactly that looks like. So, could you speak to that a little bit?
So, let me just start with that. Yes, there are certainly remote places in the United States that have been doing virtual learning for a long time. We have a very strong program that supplements our regular program. And as you know, with kids in the school, we have a pretty robust summer program. But with all of that being said, once we get past the challenges of this current pandemic where our technology people are literally working off and on, day and night, seven days a week, we will be delving into that future further. But, Mr. Guilfoyle, if you have some brief remarks that you can make off the top of your head, we could receive those now.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Waltz. Yes, so, we have been exploring this. I think it's worth noting that, at least within the state of Virginia, no one is, no one is ahead of us. In fact, in many cases, we're actually ahead of most of the other school divisions because very few school divisions within the state have a virtual program like we had even before the pandemic, which was the virtual Prince William offering that Dr. Waltz mentioned that was, a lot of students take advantage of in the summer, but we've actually been expanding that during the school year as well, even prior to the pandemic. So, we do have a good model in place. We have been looking, there is no, currently, there's no such thing as an accredited, full-time, let's call it comprehensive high school, for example, full-time virtual comprehensive high school in the state of Virginia that's accredited. It doesn't exist. It's no such thing. But it's something we've actually started trying to push. We're pushing the state to start thinking about that. We've had conversations with Ms. Casada and her team about what would that look like? What would be some of the things that needs to change? You know, and I know Mr. Mulgrew knows this intimately as well. So, for example, to be in an accredited school, you have to have things like a gym. You have to have a library. So, there are going to take some creative thinking. There may need to be changes in legislation, et cetera. So, we're really on the, just on the edge of starting to explore this. And we could take it in a lot of different ways. We have been looking at programs that are, you know, you could, and again, you know, Ms. Goss and her team, of course, will be involved in this as well. Because what we're going to need to be looking at is like, this could go in a lot of different directions. It could become a specialty program. It could be a two-year program. It could be something, you know, there's a lot of different things we can do with it. And we are exploring all those potential opportunities. Baltimore County, I believe it's Baltimore County, has a program where they have the students are able to go and kind of go, and it's an internship during the day. And then they come out of the school with more of a full-time job opportunity. So, there's some things like that. I know, for example, just from my own background, that when I went to George Washington University, I worked all day as a lobbyist and then went to my classes at GW in the evening. And I think something like that for students even now could be something that, would be something that they might be interested in, even if they're working a job that they need to support their family but have the opportunity to take those classes at alternative times. So, lots of opportunities. I think where all those options are on the table. And it's, we're just now really beginning those conversations where we have the opportunity to do so between, you know, dealing with what we have right in front of us with COVID and opening schools.
Thank you. That's really great information and very interesting to hear. And I think it'll be really exciting to watch it take shape in the future, you know, the months and years, hopefully, not too many years. But I think that's really great. My other question has to do with that maintenance auditorium theater, with the maintenance line in the CIP, which I think is really a great idea. Because, you know, we have a lot of schools that are not necessarily extremely old, but they're not really new. And they have, you know, mechanical issues or like trouble with, you know, the sound system or something like that, that we can look at upgrading that can improve the quality of our instructional experience for our students. And so, I'm really glad to see that category. And I look forward to discussing more about what, you know, what schools might be in those categories. My last question is, that's not really a question. That was just a comment, I guess.
Let me just respond as well by saying, I told, I told the team, Mr. Chiroki, I said, I want, one of my last acts is to get in a funding stream for these kinds of upgrades with the arts. Because, again, we've been doing them rather piecemeal. And people might say, well, why is that? Well, because of funding. You know, you've got to plan for these things. But even in some, like, I'll give you an example, Battlefield High School. So, Battlefield High School is not that old, but it doesn't have the LED lighting. That can save a lot on energy costs as well. And depending upon how the bids were structured, you may or may not have state-of-the-art equipment in some of these buildings. And we now have an in-house person that was a part of the Colgan Center for the Fine and Performing Arts that also works across the school division to help assess what the needs are for theatrical equipment. I'm very proud that I was a part of personally stealing him from the Hilton Center, which has never forgiven me. So, you know, the beautiful Hilton Center Center, which has never forgiven me. So, you know, the beautiful Hilton Center for the Fine and Performing Arts out, out on 234. And so what, since we've hired him, and he's been able to go out and assess some of these schools, we can actually make improvements and save money at the same time with something just like switching the electrical lighting to LED. The other thing is many of these things that have to do with riggings and the, the way the lights are posted and all of that, the weight of some of these things, some of the newer technology is much more lightweight. And in fact, sometimes the, the newer equipment is cheaper than the older, old equipment was. So there's a lot of innovation in the arts world in terms of those materials. And we've made, we've made a lot of advancements in the arts, and you know, that's, that's one of my areas. So I want to make sure that we have that funding stream and are able to assess the needs of that, just like we do so many other facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. I think that is excellent. And I am also a huge supporter of the arts. And so I'm really looking forward to the effect of that in our division. And that's great information. My last question has to do with 100G up and down upgrade. I know that's probably more than enough right now, right? And my question would be, I'm assuming that's a huge, that sounds, I mean, going from 10G, did you say, to 100G? I mean, we've, you know, multiplied it by a factor of, of 10. Is, is it fair to say that that also is a game changer? And would we, how long will that last us, do you think? I mean, I guess can't really predict the future, but I just kind of want to have an idea of, like, is that going to be sustainable for a period of time?
It's definitely a game changer. And I'll let Mr. Guilfoyle approach that one as well. And Mr. Guilfoyle, will all, will you also just give, I know you've talked about this once or twice, very briefly, and again, just briefly, but where we are in terms of how we're working with the county, you know, we were a part of that team that went out to Iron Mountain to see how that was all going to work. And it was jaw dropping, the, the improvement and the partnership with the county government on that. Just give us a, the five, five, or sixty-second update on that as well, if you would, please.
Sure. So yes, I think in the foreseeable future, 100G should be plenty. Obviously, you know, we don't necessarily know what will come next. If everybody starts wanting to stream in 4K or something, that would be a problem. But yes, I think in the near term, we're, we're in good shape. It should be plenty. I think, you know, as, one of the things that we are now working on is not just building out that 100G, but actually building redundancy into that network. So, and building better data centers, if you will. So I don't want to get into too much on the information security side of things, but one of the things is that, you know, we have some of our internet is running through what is literally a closet at one of our schools. And so, you know, that has been a top priority to, you know, we need to modernize that, we need to move to a secure facility for those types of things, and then we need to build redundancy into that. So one of the things that our team has been working on, and they were literally working on this all through the holiday break, is building that redundancy at multiple locations, so that if one of those locations goes down. And then ultimately, we want to pull out of that closet and move to Iron Mountain, which is out in Manassas, which is a tier three data center, which means that essentially it could sustain a nuclear attack. And that will be the hub for our internet moving forward. And that is something that we've been partnering with the county. They have purchased the space, they leased the space in there, and then we are running our systems through there. So that's not quite operational, but it's something that is on our, something that we've been working on a lot to, to get there.
I, I just want to add to that, that when we were able to go out there in person and get a very unusual, not many people get the kind of VIP access and tour that we were able to get. And it, it is so surreal. It reminded me of the first time I went to see the Micron production, where all these people are in these clean rooms, completely in white garb, with robotics doing almost everything. So it's a world of its own, this facility called Iron Mountain. And the, these data storage facilities are just, it's a whole different world. It's not like anything else when you actually see it. And most people only have access to a very limited part of the facility. But we learned a lot about how, what kinds of things are stored there from a technology perspective that even have to do with Washington DC. And interestingly enough, the site manager for Iron Mountain is a parent of students in the Prince William County Schools.
Wonderful. I think Ms. Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had no more.
One more.
No, I said I have no further.
No, no more. Okay. Ms. Jackson?
I just wanted to take a moment and thank you, Dr. Waltz, for your leadership on this. And thank you to your wonderful staff, who wear a thousand, 10,000 different hats. I look forward to learning more about the projects in Brentsford. I'm very excited about some of them. And I know that Mr. Chiroki, I look forward to meeting with him further to talk more about the projects, specifically about the Brentsford project and the high school. I know that we don't have the funding now, but what that means, it could be moved around and like if there are other, so the Brentsford High School renovation for 2026. And I have questions about the Westgate chiller. And then the other questions I have are probably not for now, but for later. I just have questions about how we're preparing for next year and how that factors into budgets. I know that's like a bigger question than right now, but I look forward to talking more about it. And again, I'm very thankful for your leadership and this presentation and the hard work that everybody put into. Thank you.
Any other hands? Okay. Ms. Ralston?
You're muted, Ms. Ralston.
Okay.
Now we can.
Okay. I just want to really thank you so much for all that you have done. I come from a big city, really big. And that really big city had one of the worst educational opportunities for people. I don't care if you're a child or an adult. If we could get somebody like you, I might go back to California. But at this point, I can't. So can you do to, you know, when you're just out, you know, doing nothing? So when you're out doing nothing, take a look at that. One of the things I think that you would like would be the idea of developing an educational system all on your own, completely. And then, but I'll help you. So I just thank you.
Well, you're welcome.
Take care.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Ralston. I'll wrap up with a couple of quick last questions. Mr. Guilfoyle, on the point on the virtual school, and, and I want to, you know, I, I think you, you hit it right on the, the head when, so Prince William County does many things really incredible. I can tell you, from firsthand experience, the virtual school has been incredible. And that has really given us a little bit of a lead in the, in the pandemic, you know, when this all first came out. But one of the things that, I, I like what I heard from you, and it is a, a priority, I know Ms. Wall and I talk about this a lot, but the, the ability to take some of these virtual school programs, and you said, you know, you want to expand them, increase opportunities for students, but, but continue to think about making them available to eighth graders, middle schoolers, to take courses, maybe at a high school level, and, and think about taking advantage of the waivers that they're offering in Richmond to remove prerequisites, and rather than waiting for legislation to happen and lead from the front. And in some of that effort, I think it's really important to, to, to have an open mind, be creative. And I really appreciate that. And if you could encourage our instructional leaders to, to understand that, I think it's important to, to be creative in that. And I, I really appreciate that. The virtual school program is outstanding. And, and I think has been a really good part of helping us adjust to this pandemic. But thank you so much. Last, what's incredible about this evening to me, Mr. Chiroki and Dr. Waltz, is that no board member has talked about sustainability, because it's become part of a normal discussion under your leadership. It is with a new resolution this summer to take a more aggressive approach to net zero. I'm really excited to hear from Mr. Chiroki, the team, about the efforts that they're doing with that. But the fact that this should become part of our normal behavior, our normal discussion, our normal budgeting, our bottom line budgeting, that net zero is part of where we need to go. I, I will tell you, and I've said this before publicly, the rating agencies, the markets are very impressed with organizations that are committed to that. You are seeing that in the markets, you're seeing that in bond sales, you're seeing that, that investors are making and willing to invest in organizations that have put that as a high priority. And so I think that also adds to your ability to, to remain AAA, to remain an attractive place to put money, and I think makes our community even a better place to live. So with that, I, I asked the board members to, again, convey, you know, we all, thank you all for all the hard work you're doing. Go home, get some rest. I think we're approaching the 21st or 25th hour of school board meetings in the last five days. Have a great evening. Dr. Waltz, any further comments or discussion?
No, thank you. Just appreciate everyone's participation and want to thank everyone who is a part of putting the presentations and all the back work.
Wonderful. So again, the board members, your, your further meeting date timelines are listed below. You have them in your emails. Please connect with staff regarding your concerns for the CIP. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.